I'd like to ask William if he would do the invocation for us.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you seeking your guidance and your direction in the matters that before this court today, Lord, and we pray that you guide each hand to make the choices that would best fit your will for this county, and we pray this. Only good things will come for the people of this county and the county itself. We ask it out in the sweet name of Jesus. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
We have a court, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Jerry Huffman if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the minutes of the March 18th and March 24th being of the fiscal court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Also, is there a motion to adopt a proclamation or resolution declaring April 24th to 26th, 2025 as hillbilly days in Pike County?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We have the proclamation here. Jerry, who else here with you? We can get the McCoy Well website. It's 150 per month. We've done this for years. I'm not sure this y'all to come up and get a picture. Y'all want to come there and do this?
Yeah.
Jerry, we'll do it right there for us?
Congratulations.
is any increase. I think it's the same as last year at Roy. But yeah, so this is the There you go.
I appreciate it.
lease where we lease parking for that site. Is there a motion to approve the lease for a term of one year with Pam Maynard?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Next item is approval of a modification. It's amendment number one to Title Basin's task order for the number two master agreement. Roy's looked at this. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I just want to do an update. We have two representatives of Title Basin here, and that is a disaster management company that's helping get, making sure that we do all the paperwork correctly with FEMA so that the county doesn't get stuck with a bunch of bills. In the past, during one flood, the county ended up getting stuck with quite a bit of bills that FEMA would not cover because proper procurement procedures were not in place. And we have awarded or put out and accepted bids for 12 of the 15 initial bridges. We're not in the position to award those just yet because tomorrow morning, and this is particularly important for the folks at the Woodman, Summer Road, and Middle Elk area who are still having to go through the creek. I hate this process with FEMA. I hate it. I hate the bureaucracy. I hate how long it takes. I hate the fact that there's, that the policies are what they are. I didn't create the system, but this court has to live with the system, and we have to comply with it. And we have to make sure that every "i" is dotted and every "t" is crossed because if not, this storm could break the county in terms of the repair cost if we don't make sure that we've done it right. So the initial contract with Title Basin was, I think, 180 or 183,000 was the maximum. This increases the maximum to $538,990. Now, that doesn't mean that's what it's going to cost. The county will be responsible for 13 percent, the state 12 percent, FEMA 75 percent of this. Hopefully, the county's portion will be covered by the SAFE funds, but in order to get all of the damage assessed, because we have a meeting at 10 o'clock tomorrow, the kickoff meeting, it's a phone call with FEMA, and then shortly thereafter, we'll have a, what's the acronym?
RSA.
RSA. What is that?
Recovery Scoping Meeting.
Okay, Recovery Scoping Meeting. More acronyms. That will take place fairly quickly. And once that meeting takes place, we only have 60 days to submit to FEMA all the damage that's been done to county roads, infrastructure, and so forth. 60 days is not a lot of time to document and do all the paperwork for 1,300-plus areas of damage. And so we've got to make sure that we've got ample personnel here from Title Basin to help Fabian get this stuff documented. Fabian and Tim and the road department crews can't document and do the paperwork on 1,300 sites and take care of doing the work, too. You just can't do it. And we're still doing roadwork from the 2022 flood. We actually just started it because we were still dealing with the emergency repairs. We're still dealing with other storm damage that occurred in 2020 and 2021. So this is going to be a long-term recovery process, and I'm afraid that with the flooding in western Kentucky and the damage that has been sustained over such a large area, who knows how many thousands of homes and businesses have been destroyed in central and western Kentucky with some areas over 15 inches of rain over a three-day period. I must want, I'm just thankful that it didn't hit us.
Yeah.
If that had shifted 150 miles west and we had had 10 to 15 inches of rain, it would have made the February flood look minor. And I think Ne and I had a lot of conversations over that. You know, the forecasters missed the February event in terms of how much rain, you know, what the impact on the rivers were going to be. They got this one right because they said it wasn't going to be. We didn't even declare a state of emergency here because of the fact that we never got the rain. But in areas in western Kentucky, I think Marshall County had areas that had 15.6 inches of rain. 15.6 inches. If that had hit us, I mean, it would be catastrophic. You probably wouldn't have anything between Pike County and Louise or Ashland. And if you look at the damage that's taking place right now in Louisville along the riverfront, I mean, I think it's just now cresting from what I've seen, and it was over 60 feet. So this, we have to do this amendment because when we have the Recovery Scoping Meeting, there will be folks here who will be looking to do the two main bridge scopings while they're here for Middle Elk and Woodman Summer. So because those are the first two we have to do. And in fact, we didn't even get a bid on the Middle Elk Bridge. We think that bridge is probably going to be 3/4 of a million dollars to a million dollars. But once the scoping is, Fabian thinks more. But once that scoping meeting takes place, then hopefully we can move pretty quickly to negotiate with someone to build that bridge. That needs to be the first bridge beside, Woodman, Summer, and Middle Elk need to be the two, the first two bridges done.
Yeah.
But like I said, we didn't get a bid on Middle Elk, and maybe it's because it's such a big bridge. That bridge could easily go over a million dollars because that is a massive span, and we've got to make sure that it, you know, whatever bridge is put back there, we can't afford to have this happen again. And I hate to say this, this is going to happen again. I mean, it's happening too frequently. Every day, every four days in 2024 in the United States, every four days, there was a major disaster declaration, whether it's wildfires, tornadoes, thunderstorms, snow or ice storms, floods. And I also just want to say while we're dealing with this, I just want to say that, you know, the folks in emergency management, Eric Gibson and his staff, I mean, they have just been through a really, really hard, hard time dealing with the February floods. And now to get hit with a flood event that is of substantially greater magnitude. And, you know, they're like us. I mean, they only have so much staff. They only have so much money. And I suspect it won't be long before the legislature's going to have to go back in session to look at appropriating additional funds for the EK SAFE and WK SAFE funds because there's just simply not going to be enough. It's going to be hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in damage, if not more than that. The numbers we kicked around just tentatively were 200-plus million in damage to Pike County. I mean, you imagine how many counties in central and western Kentucky have been damaged. So but in any event, Roy has looked at this as I understand it, and everything is in order. Is there a motion to approve the amendment number one to Title Basin's task order on the number two master agreement?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Our next item is approval of a lease for additional storage space for Pike County Emergency Management. This is a lease for $1,200 per month with Adams Construction. Roy, I assume, has also looked at this, and everything's in order. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this lease agreement with Adams Construction for Emergency Management?
Should it be a deposit upon signing of the lease?
Yes.
It should be a deposit upon signing of the lease?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the lease and also for a check to cover any lease payments and deposits that may be necessary?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Next item, Greg on the bids. I want to just briefly, while Greg's coming up here, just say a couple things. One of the things that we're going to do here before too long is have an after-action meeting with our emergency management staff or some of the key first responders of city of Pikeville. And, you know, we do have single county coal service tax monies available, and we need to look at what we need to do to expand our swift water capabilities and to try to increase the number of swift water, trained swift water rescue teams here in the county and to make sure, I mean, we keep learning. I mean, we've learned a lot from each one of these events that we've had, and what we have learned is if this rain event had hit central and eastern Kentucky like it did central and western Kentucky, you know, if you see there's still the number of fatalities keeps going up. We had four fatalities in our flood event in February. We're very fortunate it wasn't more. But what we also learned, I mean, this flood in February was a horrible, horrible disaster. It could have been infinitely worse if it had continued to come up and we would have had to evacuate the nursing home here in Pikeville, if it had topped the flood wall at Tug Valley ARH. If it had, you know, if we had had more of our secondary, you know, smaller streams and creeks flood, you know, if you had had more of that type of flooding to where you had structures damaged in places like Indian Creek or, you know, more homes like in Turkey Creek or on Blackberry Creek, there were areas that really didn't get touched to any significant magnitude. So we need to make sure that we've got the swift water and urban search and rescue train teams and equipment to do what needs to be done. We can't depend on teams coming in from outside the state or from western Kentucky or central Kentucky because, you know, if we have an event, they may not be able to get here, or that event may be impacting their communities, and they may not be able to come to our help. We're going to have to be a lot more self-sufficient. And, you know, one of the things, I may have mentioned this at a prior court meeting, was one of the Task Force One FEMA urban search and rescue teams that came in here told me that when Helene hit North Carolina and Tennessee, he had been tasked to come to Pike County because there were concerns that that storm event was going to hit our area. If that system had shifted 100 miles farther north and they had dumped 25 or 30 inches of rain in these mounds, there wouldn't have been anything left. But we, the chances of something like, happening like that are higher. I mean, we've had two major river floods in my lifetime, plus the '84 flood, not counting all the other flash flood events. You know, I remember since I've been in office, you know, we've had water rescues at Phelps. We had a fatality over there back, I guess, early 2000s. We've had, we've done, I mean, I remember watching water rescues up on, I can't remember if it was Dick's Fork or Meat House over at Big Creek in a flash flood event over there. We've had, we've had so many of these flood events. They're going to, they're going to keep happening, and I'm just afraid it's a matter of time till we get hit with one that's substantially worse than what we just went through.
I tell you what, Judge, not cutting you off, but that Coon Creek, that was an old ten. I've never seen nothing like that before.
Well, you had, well, you had Winds Branch, and that Coon Creek area got flooded twice in 13 or 14 months.
It was a disaster.
Well, and that was confined to a fairly small area. If we get hit with 15 inches of rain or get hit with something like a remnants of a hurricane coming up here that sits, just stalls out and dumps 20 inches of water or 20 inches of rain, it's eventually going to happen. I mean, the odds are that we're going to have something like that happen. I hope and pray it doesn't. But, you know, whether any of us are here or not in these positions, whoever is, Ne or whoever is in emergency management, they need to have the resources available that they don't have to worry about somebody coming to save us from outside the area. And we need to make sure that we've spent the money that he needs to make sure that the teams that they have are funded, trained, and equipped. And we've got the money to do it, and it's a matter of, we may spend a bunch of money, and it sit there for 10 years or 20 years and never be used. But the one thing is, if it happens and you haven't spent the money, you don't have what you need, then it's going to translate into people dying.
Yeah.
We're very fortunate that we did not have double-digit fatalities from this storm.
Oh, God, yeah.
Ne and I were sitting in the EOC that night, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, and we were, you know, I asked Ne, I said, "How many fatalities do you think this is going to end up with?" And he said, "I think it'll be double digits." And that was based on the calls that we had coming in.
Right.
We were hearing these calls, people trapped and so forth. So I just want to make sure that this court does everything it can to make sure that our first responders have the equipment and the resources that they need.
If we, if we fail to prepare, we can go ahead and prepare to fail. And, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm in total agreement that we need to make sure that our fire departments and those guys have any type of equipment they need because, what was it, 600 lives that were saved by boat rescue only, I mean, during this? So it would be horrible if we did not equip our people and our first responders with the tools they need. I mean, it would be horrible to sit back and think, "Well, we could have, we could have had this or we couldn't have had," you know. At least you see where your money's going also. It's going to help your people and to save your people, your kids, your elderly, you know. I mean, what better could you spend that money on?
Well, the Tug Valley, the people that were rescued out of the Tug Valley Apartments, I mean, those, those buildings were not at risk of being washed off their foundations. If you get a rainfall event where you got 15, 20 inches of rain, then all bets are off. I mean, then you're going to see structures, instead of just having a couple feet of water in them, are going to be gone. And I think Ne would agree with that. I mean, you know, when, you know, they were, you know, people could have stayed in them safely.
Yeah.
I mean, they obviously wouldn't want them in cold water, but, I mean, the structure was not going to wash off at the Tug Valley Apartments. But I think Ne would agree with me. If you had had a 15 or 20-inch rain event and that river overtopped the flood wall around Tug Valley ARH, and that river had gotten that much higher, then you would have to worry about having, getting people out of the second-floor apartments. It could have been infinitely worse. And, but we're going to have that meeting. I'm not sure when we'll get to it, but we need to put a plan together, and we need to implement that plan and fund it, just like the training that Ne's been doing, Tim, they've been doing with the emergency management. We need to continue that. So, all right. Greg, awarding the bids.
I have a couple of things. It's a couple of things that are on our capital plan. The first one is an aerial bucket truck. It is on the capital plan. I think this is something that we've needed for a few years. I think Paul and his crew have one that they've kind of been patching together and trying to make it last for quite some time. We can actually buy this. It's through Altech. It's actually a F-450 diesel, built on a F-450 diesel truck. We can buy it through a GSA contract, which we're a member of. That saves us about $13,000 on the cost. The total cost for us will be $119,937.07, and we can have that within 30 days. I'd also like to get approval to, for the treasurer to be able to write a check for payment. On the second page there, there's actually a picture of the truck.
And this is, okay. This is state contract price, Greg?
It's through the GSA contract.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of this truck? I guess this is a, this bucket truck in authorization to issue payment for the same for the purchase price of $119,937.07.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Second thing I have, Judge, is a Harper mower. Paul refers to it as a do-easy. It's a, it's a slope mower. I think from what I understand, this one will go to Grant's Branch. We have one that's, that's several years old that they've been having a lot of problems out of. We have this on our capital plan. We can buy this through our Omnia co-op contract. When I got reading through, he sent me this quote, you can see, I wrote down at the bottom of it, emailed a new quote. They, I got to reading through that Harper contract through Omnia, and it said that, from the factory, that they would pay 50% of the freight, and he couldn't tell me if this $1,375 was 50% of it or all of it. So he was in, in trying to get a hold of corporate to find out. So if we want to buy this mower, I'd like to get the 6280375 approved, but if I can get that other, another 50% off of that, it'll save us another $600 or $700. This isn't our capital plan. It is on an Omnia co-op contract that we are a member of.
Is that Harper? Is this supposed to be a good mower, Greg? I ain't never heard of it.
It's, it's, I think on that second page, there's a picture of it. It's those that you can go sideways on a hill and you actually stay level, but the mower deck cuts like this. We've had one for years, maybe a couple of them that we've had and used for years, but they're kind of beyond repair, so we got one put in the capital budget for this year.
Well, that's about what you'd have to have at Grant's Branch, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we need on that slope over there. And I think, I think also, we had one at the landfill, if I'm not mistaken, that we, that we used there.
That's, that's the only way you're going to cut Grant's Branch and keep it clean and neat-looking.
It's either that or weed eater.
One of those.
You know, because it's steep.
Right.
Yeah.
Don't want to put no weeds, do you?
No, I mean, that's, hey, Greg, let me ask you this. I was going through, and it just now popped up. That truck that we talked about on the spray, the spray truck, have, like, right after that, we went straight into flood, flood mode.
Well, what happened? I located the one in Florida, in Miami, that we thought might be about what we wanted to do, and we were looking at some options of getting a dealer to go look at it and give us a, you know, analyze it for us or sending somebody down there.
Right.
The next day, I called them, and they had sold it.
Okay.
So I did some more looking, and the next, I haven't in a few weeks, to be honest, but in the next few weeks after that, I did some looking, tried to find something else similar. There's just not a lot out there. You know, you can buy a new one, but you're talking about, you know, spending $250,000, $300,000 for one.
Yeah.
But I had looked for the next couple of weeks after that, after they sold that one, and he actually called me after that, a few days after that, and said, "I may have another one like this coming in." I said, "If you do, you let me know." But evidently, they weren't able to trade for it. So, but I can start looking again, but something like that's hard to find. That was probably the perfect one that we needed for the money and what we were going to use it for.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to purch, and this is on?
This is on Omnia, our Omnia co-op contract. Also, Judge, I'd like to get, for the treasurer to be able to write a check for payment.
All right. Is there a motion to purchase this mower from Century Equipment for 6280375? This will be used at Grant's Branch. Is that on the?
That's what I understand.
Yeah. Okay. And is there a motion to approve the purchase price for that amount and authorization to issue payment for the same?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Judge.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. The next item is treasurer's business. I'm sorry. Is there a road supervisor's report?
It's in there.
Not mine. Yeah, all right. Thank you. All right. Road supervisor's report. This thing is pretty thick, Fabian.
How long has it worked out?
Yeah, and again, if you want to know what, if people want to know what work's been done or not been done, these are posted, or I guess they're still putting them on Pike TV. And
But, uh, I, I can start looking again, but something like that's hard to find. That was probably the perfect one that we needed for the money and what we were going to use it for.
All right. Is there a motion to purch... And this is on, uh...
This is, um, Omnia, our Omnia co-op contract. Also, Judge, I'd like to get, uh, uh, for the treasurer to be able to write a check for payment.
All right. Is there a motion to purchase this mower from Century Equipment for sixty-two eight oh three seventy-five? Um, this will be used at Grant's Branch. Is that on the, uh...
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, is there a motion to approve the purchase price for that amount and authorization to issue payment for the same?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, next item is treasurer's business. I'm sorry. Is there a road supervisor's report?
It's in there.
Not in mine? Uh, yeah, all right. Thank you. All right, road supervisor's report. This thing is pretty thick, baby.
How long has it worked out?
Yeah, and again, if you want to know what, if people want to know what work's been done or not been done, these are posted, or I guess they're still putting them on Pike TV. Um, and, uh, that way you can see the work that's scheduled and the work that's being completed. So is there a motion to, uh, adopt the...
I'm really sorry. I just wanted to call you, but there is a new section in there, and it's for the bridges.
Come on. Baby, you have to say it again, so that way people can hear it on TV.
There's a new section in there, and that's for the debris removal of these bridges. And, uh, that's exactly, I mean, it's self-explanatory. I mean, that's what it is. But we've got, uh, right now, the Phelps crew is going around picking up the debris from the, the bridges. Uh, so we are just listing that. Because it, I didn't want to put it in there in, in just the normal work orders, because this is kind of a little separate. Something that we normally don't do, you know.
Right.
I just wanted to explain, when you guys saw that, that that's what that is.
So the, um, just, just to recap real quick on those bridges, since you was bringing them up, uh, Middle Elk and Woodman Summer. Hopefully, if everything goes good, FEMA will be in here tomorrow for a kickoff, correct?
It's by phone.
There's a phone conference tomorrow.
By phone, and then they will have folks on the ground after the call, I guess.
Well, it'll be, there has to be scheduled after the call. It has to be scheduled.
Yeah.
When, when the folks from Title Basin feel like they've got their, the documentation ready, then we'll schedule that meeting. The in-person meeting, then, at that point, this is, this is what's frustrating. So they'll schedule the meeting. They will, because with the two bridges that are out, they, at that meeting, they will have representatives on the ground from FEMA to do the assessments on those two bridges. And then, at, within sixty days after that meeting, that's why we've got to hire these additional, uh, people from Title Basin. They're going to put twelve teams down to help document and get all the scopes of work done. Because if you've got thirteen hundred places that we've identified, and you've only got sixty days to get it documented and get the paperwork done, there's, there's no way that you can do that in sixty days. Um, so, uh, it's going to take a while. I mean, you know, hopefully, the two bridges at Woodman Summer and Middle Elk can get, those can get done quickly. That's the plan. But, you know, we've got the bids put out, but, you know, our, our disaster management experts have said, don't start the work until the discussion has been done and, and FEMA's looked at it. Because if we go build a million-dollar bridge and FEMA says, well, you didn't need to do it this way, or it's over, overly priced, or it's over, you know, it's excessive, or whatever, and then we get stuck with that, you know, I mean, I would rather be stuck with thirteen percent of a million dollars than a hundred percent of a million. So, I mean, we, the county just can't afford to take that chance, and, you know.
But as far as the county goes, I mean, just for the record, the county's done their part. We've, we've set the bids out, we've, we've got them back in, we've approved the bids.
Until this...
Like, we're, this has nothing whatsoever to do with the county of why it's being held up. It's strictly a hundred percent.
It's the hoops we have to jump through.
Red tape from, from the federal side. I mean, it ain't got nothing to do with us.
It's part of the process.
Yep.
Part of the process.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the completed scheduled work orders?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
All right, um, treasurer's business.
I'll do these as one motion, Judge?
Yep.
Authorize a check to the Kentucky Department of Local Government in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents to turn over funds in the L G D F recaptured fund, uh, back to the state, to Pike County's L G D F single county account, coal severance account. Acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize a statement about the treasurer?
Motion.
Yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
By Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
All right, um... All right, Frankie, uh, you want to go over this truck auction stuff? Let's just do it next time.
Well, whatever you want.
Let's do it next time.
Okay.
It's been a long day. All right. Do we need executive session?
No, sir, we'll have it.
Let me, let's take a look at him. If we do, Bobby, we can run back there. While Bobby's distributing that, um, we will be having a meeting on April fifteenth at the Pike County Library on one twenty-six Lee Avenue for a question-and-answer session for a voluntary home buyout program. Uh, we will have county officials as well as representatives from Kentucky Emergency Management. Kentucky Emergency Management will be sort of overseeing this. Um, the county will be the, I guess, the participating entity. Uh, but we will be advertising this in the newspaper and also on social media. But if you're interested, if you've been, you know, if you've been a victim of repeated flooding and you're interested in a buyout program, it's voluntary, nobody's making you sell your house. Uh, but if it's something you're interested in, uh, there will be a meeting on, uh, April fifteenth at six P M. at the Pike County Library. All right. Does anybody have any questions that we would need to go to special session for these? All right. It's my motion to approve, acknowledge moving Kenneth Reed to a non-C D L driver, special crew, at a three H rate of pay effective three thirty twenty-five. To acknowledge moving Christian Fields from seasonal labor on special crew to weed mower at lot five at three H rate of pay effective three thirty twenty-five. To acknowledge hiring Joseph Harris as a C D L driver of solid waste to four H rate of pay effective three twenty-four twenty-five. To acknowledge hiring Zade Smith as a loader of solid waste to H rate of pay effective three twenty twenty-five. To acknowledge moving Zachary Payne from seasonal labor to special crew, uh, to a full-time loader for solid waste to two H rate of pay effective four-two twenty-five. To acknowledge the hiring of Ronald Blair as a mower, low rock four, road lock four, at a three H rate of pay effective four-seven twenty-five. And to acknowledge moving Austin Turnmeyer from a weed mower at lot four to a weed mower, weed, geez, weed mower at lot three at a three H rate of pay. When is that effective, Bobby? Today? Effective today? All right. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, um. Anybody from either department supervisors have anything? If there's nothing from county attorney's office? William, you have anything? I don't have anything. You have anything?
I'd just like to make mention, uh, May the seventeenth, the rodeo kicks back off. And we'd like to make sure that everybody out there watching TV and, and in here in the court meeting knows, it's, it's a really great, um, it's a great thing that, that we've got started going on here in Pike County. Last year was, uh, great. Had over seven hundred and some spectators at the first one. And there'll be bull riding, there'll be, um, you know, kids can ride the sheep. And plus, this year, there'll be mini bulls, uh, for, uh, children, you know, nine, twelve-year-olds, thirteen-year-olds. And, uh, it's something really, uh, something really enjoyable to, to get into. Uh, and I'd tell you, you know, if your kids is wanting to get involved, uh, please let us know. Uh, get ahold of Scott Adams down on Johns Creek also. Uh, you can reach out to him. And, you know, a lot of people don't realize this, but I, I know rodeo is not a real big, has not been a real big deal here in our area. Uh, but, you know, there's over a hundred and twenty colleges that give scholarships, uh, for rodeo. And, uh, you know, if we could get something like that started back here for, for our youth, uh, hey, I'd rather see them riding a bull than out here running up, down, and hollering on meth, you know. So anything we can do to keep our youth involved and keep them busy, I'm all, I'm all about it. So if you want to support it, uh, you can go on the Facebook and, you know, they are taking, uh, donations, uh, for companies and things like that that wants to donate to it. Uh, or if you just want to come, bring your family out and watch it, uh, it's one Saturday, uh, every month. We'd love to have you.
All right. Anybody have anything else?
Judge, I'm just going to be real short. I can't let it go by. Tomorrow is my little boy's fifteenth birthday. I want to wish him a happy early birthday. He's, he's turned into a fine young man, and he's already handed me over the new law of getting his permit at fifteen, so.
Yeah.
Everybody pray for me.
You're in trouble.
Well, you know, I've got an opinion about that law. And, you know, I've done a lot of cases for kids who've been killed, more than I want to think about. And I've seen, Ne, Ne Jackson's shaking his head. Ne's been in emergency with the fire department for over thirty-seven years. When I was in the Senate, I was one of the first people, I was the first person to introduce the graduated drivers licensing bill in the state senate. And the reason I did that was because I had seen too many young people hurt and killed in car wrecks. Now, let me tell you how stupid our, our, that, our government works. And it's stupid. My daughter is taking training right now. Uh, she's had a class with Jamie Kidd last week. And she has had her permit since December. She's sixteen. And if it takes me till she's eighteen or nineteen to where I'm comfortable that she can safely operate a car, because when you take somebody, when I got my driver's license, you drove around coal run and see if you could parallel park.
Yeah.
And to see if you could do a correct turnabout, and you made sure you gave a turn signal. And now they drive around downtown Pike. And, you know, not too many years ago, U S twenty-three was in the top ten most deadly roads in the state. So we let somebody drive around town. If they get their dri... If they pass that test, then we put them out on U S twenty-three. Now, we're not testing children in real-world conditions. You know, I've never seen anybody get killed parallel parking or messing up hitting a curb. Okay? You might, you might, you might curb a tire, but you don't get somebody killed. You do get teenagers killed when you put them on roads like one ninety-four, or six thirty-two, or two ninety-two, or, uh, three nineteen, or one ninety-five, or one ninety-seven. I mean, and one of the biggest things that gets kids killed is they run off the road and they don't know how to bring it back, oversteer correction. You know, they don't know how to do that. And the legislature, in my opinion, made a horrible, and I don't understand it. If I had been state senator, I would have voted against it. Quite candidly, a fifteen-year-old has no business getting a driver's license. I mean, they don't.
Well, I wouldn't want my kid to have it.
No, and I don't, I don't want my children to have it. And my little boy is soon to be eleven. And there's no way, when he turns fifteen, he's going to get a permit.
No.
I mean, it's not going to do that. And I think the legislature, statistics bear out what I'm saying. The graduated drivers licensing, the older a kid is, the better trained they are, the safer they are.
Yeah.
And I can tell you with my daughter, one of the first things she wants is to hook her phone up. Well, that's going to get people killed. And, uh, we all know how our kids and grandkids are. You can't keep a phone out of their hand. And the legislature, in my opinion, will be responsible for some of these kids getting hurt and killed. There's no reason that they should have done that. It's just, it's insanity. And I've got a real strong feeling about that. I'm glad you brought it up. Um, because, uh, there is nothing worse that could happen to a parent than losing a child. I, I can't, and I've got friends that have had that happen. Um, all of us probably knew somebody growing up that that happened to.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, parents will say, you know, even though the legislature says you can, I'm going to say you can't. Um, because, uh, go, go talk to some of people like Bubby. Bubby's done it. Bubby's pulled teenagers out of cars. Uh, Ne has. And, uh, I, I just think it's a stupid, stupid thing for our legislature to have done. But, you know, they, they don't make it, I mean, I don't know. We can talk about that another day. Um, you know, I'll tell you what I did do. When my son got his driver's license, there's a driving school. It's a two-day program. It, it wasn't cheap. But I think I spent about a thousand, twelve hundred dollars on it. But I took him to a two-day driver's class to try to make sure that he had, you know, uh, oversteer, understeer correction, hydroplaning, and those things that you can't do, or they don't teach you in our driver's training here locally. Um, and, you know, I said, that's a lot of money, but how much is my child's life worth? You know, you're going to buy him a car, and you're going to insure it, and you're going to put fuel in it, and you're going to maintain it. Um, to me, it was, it was an investment, uh, to make sure that he's a safe driver, and so far, he's so good. But, um, I'm just hopeful that, uh, again, that people will say fifteen's too young. I won't go say anything to you, Mr. Jones.
Well, it's been on my mind. Me and Ronald was going to the last conference. He got a phone call, didn't know wrong, right out of the blue. Daddy, guess what they passed? My birthday is week after next. I was like, yeah, that don't mean nothing. And he said, well, I, I can get a permit then. I said, well, no, not necessarily. You know, we didn't talk very much back, because I wasn't telling him exactly what he wanted to hear. But, you know, like you said, me, Ne, and few others that seen this. But hopefully, some of these calls that I'm taking this fifteen-year-old on, and I'm taking him right with me, every call we get. Maybe he'll see something that'll stick in the back of his head like it did mine back years ago, and maybe help him one day realize what can happen to you. Because, I mean, I take the young on every trip I go, and...
Well, you know, I think I learned that same lesson growing up around the funeral home. And, uh,
Yeah.
you know, it's, it's something that only happens once, and it's, uh, unfortunately, happens all too often.
Oh, yeah.
So anyway...
I had, uh, I had two granddaughters that got their permit at fifteen. But, you know, that was in Tennessee. They've been doing that for several years up there. They, they give them their permit in Tennessee at fifteen, you know, and so far, they've been accident-free, and I'm proud of them, you know what I'm saying? Uh, one of them's twenty-one, one of them's seventeen now. And ain't had an accident yet. That's good.
Well, that's good, and hopefully they ever do.
Yeah. Hey, Judge, I forgot to mention also, uh, everyone remember, uh, Steve Dammer's family in your prayer. Uh, his father passed away, that worked for the county for a long time. And just remember that family and stuff in your prayers tonight.
And Christine, would you please pass that on to, uh, to Steve as well? We're very sorry about that. My dad and Dan graduated together. And, uh, I just, uh, didn't, uh, just hated to hear that. That, that thought, thought a lot of, uh, of Dan, and Dan's been a good friend for a long time. All right. Any other, uh, any other business coming for the court?
Yeah, Judge, I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank all the workers for the, that worked with the court, the county and everything. And, uh, I know a lot of them have been putting long airs in. It's, it's been a, it's been a rough twenty-two to twenty-five years. It's, it's, uh, seemed like everything happened. It just, one thing added and added. Can't, can't never get a line back out. But it, it's been about the worst as I've ever remember seeing, really, to be honest with you.
Well, um, they've worked hard, and, you know, we've got a lot of dedicated people working for the county.
We do.
And, um, and, um, I'm proud of the work that they've done.
I am too.
I do want to mention, too, Greg's, uh, dad, uh, Bob, has been in the hospital. How many days, Greg?
Four, five days.
And he's ninety...
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. And retired educator, tough as nails. Um, we want to wish him, uh, a speedy recovery. And, uh, remember, remember Greg's dad and mom in your prayers as well, so. Uh, any other business coming for the court? Want to mention out to Jerry's mother, had a significant injury a couple of weeks ago, and Anita Atkins, and keep her in your prayers as well. It's been, it's been a tough time for a lot of families, and Doug Tackett, who is our deputy emergency management director, has been in the hospital, in ICU now for over a week. A week ago Wednesday, Doug messaged me and said, "I won't be coming in," said, "I tested positive for COVID." I asked him how he's feeling, and he said, "Well, I'm just, I'm waiting for the meds to kick in, but not too bad." That afternoon, they put him in the hospital, and then he ended up on a ventilator, had to have emergency surgery, and Nate texted me earlier today that they have got him weaned off the ventilator, and Nate and I were over there, I guess, last weekend, weekend before last, Sunday night, and, I mean, we were concerned, I mean, we were very concerned. It was touch and go, and he was, he was fighting for his life, and we want to just, you know, keep Doug and Anita and the rest of the Tackett family in your prayers. Doug has given a lot of years of his life to this community, both Shelby Valley Fire Department, you know, Shelby Valley Ambulance Service, Mercy Management Director, and, you know, the last two major disaster declarations. He's come back to help, just take some of the workload off of Nate, and Tim, and CJ, and he's never not answered the call when the people of this county needed him, and we just need to remember him in your prayers as well. So, anyway, any other business come before the court? That being said, if there's not, then William, would you close us out with a word of prayer, and then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you, Lord, and thank you for the guidance and the decision-making that happened here today, and we pray that those decisions follow your will. And, Lord, we, we know if that happens, it'll better this county and the people therein. But we also want to lift up in prayer the, the Steve Dameron family, the Bob Fannin family, and Doug Tackett and his family as well, and remember Jerry's mother, Ada Aggins, or Nada Aggins, and, Lord, in, in her trials and injuries. Lord, we ask all of these things in the precious name of Jesus Christ, and we ask him in his name. Amen.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.